Welcome to the Swan County Board of County Commissioners meeting for April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. At this time on the last, Mr. Flynn, could you give the invocation in the prayer? That was already addressed to the board members.
Let us pray in the ninth hour. Our Father be come. Thank you for all your blessings. Thank you for life and strength. Thank you for things that washed over the takers. Praise you blessed. Give strength and wisdom, heal and deliver the touched bodies. I know that you able. I look at our chairman, look at the commissioners today, helping to make decisions in the right way, in the right place. Look at our county staff, look on the ones in the audience, and we pray that you have mercy. Blessed are those who serve among us, the three families, you know they've got power to heal and to deliver. We pray this day that you be with us, helping to conduct the county buildings as you see fit. Father, we ask you in all blessings that Jesus can be great. Amen.
Let us lead this into the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to item number one, approval of minutes for the March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two Professional Engineering Services CEI Tabulation Meeting and the April fifth, twenty twenty-two Regular Board Meeting. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Hale, second by Commissioner Landall in favor. All those things, motion carries. Moving on to the consent agenda, we're going to pull items four, seven, nine, and ten for discussion. So we're looking at items two, three, five, six, and eight for approval. Is there a motion for approval or discussion? Motion by Commissioner Land, second by Commissioner Flynn, all in favor. All those same signs. Motion carries. Item number four. Commissioner Land?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to make a comment about this. We didn't, weren't able to pull off a merger or get that done with the city on the fire, but I wanted to, I want the public to thank Chief Hand and Chief Crawford, he's not here, but we've got an agreement here in place that will be beneficial to both the citizens of Bylowoke and also citizens of Swan County, this mutual aid agreement. Really, I just, I just wanted to point it out that this is something that had been talked about for years and years, and hats off to those two guys for working together and getting it done to benefit our community. I just want to thank them for that.
There any more questions to speak?
If no one has any questions or wants to speak about, I'll move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Land.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale. All approved, aye. All those same signs. Motion carries. Item number seven, approval of the task for North Florida Professional Services for cattle site boundary surveys. I was pulling that item for discussion. Mr. Harris, on that, are we, are we surveying the whole property? Does that include that whole piece or?
I think this leaves the parcels out that, I'm sorry, my dog's trying to, leaves the parcels out that are associated with the development authority land to the farm west of one hundred and seventy-fifth. So this takes the water plant, the piece that's cleared on the west side of one hundred and seventy-fifth, and the piece that's cleared on the east side of the rail spur, and the piece that's east, well, on the east end and west end, that's two parcels. East and west of the rail spur, west of one hundred and seventy-fifth, and the water plant parcel. So the only one that would be left would be the development authority piece.
And we have a contract purchase that, do we know?
That's correct.
Or can we add that in, get it surveyed at the same time or?
Again?
Well, I just, you know how it is to get the survey right now, so I just kind of want to get it all done at one time and have it sitting there available when we need it.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Harris?
You're, you're, you're wanting to include the piece to the west of the development authority?
Yes.
Homes into the boundary survey.
Right.
My question is, is, I don't have a problem with that, but my question is, is when we approved, we approved that purchase back in September twenty twenty-one, do we have closing date or when, when was, where are we actually buying that?
Mr. Chairman, I'll take that. Mr. Parker, that property, as you recall, was part of Warner Estate, and then it went through the Harold bankruptcy and go all the way through there. Mr. Parker, the twenty-dollar title that made up power to be able to do that, is being thorough to make sure that we put the appropriate title on that particular piece because of all of those things that have happened. He didn't take it within the next ten days, if not by Friday, but within the next ten days before we got it through.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Who are you?
So, so when the development authority took title, there were some exceptions on the title that weren't cleared up?
No, sir. But, but different title companies have different standards. The two companies, the title that was issued, the title insurance policy that was issued to the development authority was issued at the behest of the seller in that particular case. And we're the purchaser here, and the title company, the name of it is different, not Mr. Parker's office, I mean, but the underwriting company was different. They had different standards.
So did, did we have a survey on that, or did the development authority have a survey on that, or do you know?
There was an older survey when the property was done before two thousand and eighteen, but there had been no changes to it, not what it utilized back in two thousand and eighteen.
Is that something we can just get recertified without surveying again, or do we?
No, I looked into that, but it was by a company that was out of Jacksonville.
So we'll have to have it re-surveyed.
I can look at them, but they're not, they had not been responsible at this point.
So, Mr. Harris, do we need to just bring this back in another meeting for that survey for that particular piece, or can we add it in on this, or?
Add it in.
We can add it in, but we don't have a cost, you know, to be, to do their, Ms. Corry? There you go. Do we have a testament for our cost not to exceed to be able to perform with it?
Well, you're in the hot seat, actually. I thought we'd get a quantity discount here since you were there.
Like my four, get one free?
Yeah.
I don't know if they'll agree with that right now, but if you want to keep going and come back to us, I mean, you can get one.
That'll be fine. We got a public hearing we need to do anyway, so if you want to check on that for me, that'd be great, and we'll move on to, we're pulled up on this consent agenda too, and move on to these, there's just one item, item number twelve, if I have it, if I have it soon thereafter. Matter of, can be heard, hold a public hearing, discuss the possibility of providing curbside pickup of residential household waste within unincorporated area of Swan County. Mr. Harris?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, you have a copy of the statute. This is really just a technical requirement. The board has not decided to contract the curbside pickup, but it was one of the options that we entertained, that the board entertained, that'll come back to you in the workshop, where we will discuss all the waste. In order to advertise the RFP to obtain the proposals, though, the statute requires us to have a public hearing, and we had to send letters out to the two companies that provide pickup in the county right now, which we did. So we're following through with the requirements of statute, so that when this hearing is concluded, we can then send those advertisements out to the RFP, try to obtain the information for your workshop.
Okay. Is there any questions? Mr. Harris, anybody?
Do any good, swear.
Yeah.
If you're going to give anybody's.
Yeah, that's why I was going before a public hearing, to public comment, is anybody wishing to speak on this?
Anybody at all including the staff, is we sworn for this particular? Can you raise your hand, Mr. Harris?
I'm sorry.
You swear in front of the testimony you give before the board, seeing your truth to help you out?
Yes.
Well, at this scene, nobody wants to speak, I want to close up the public comment. Is there any more discussion on this item? If not, do we have a motion to approve? Chair, I make a motion. Motion by Commissioner Hale.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Land, all in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll move back to consent agenda, and Mr. Corry's checking on that. Number nine, award bid and authorize execution of contracted tenant services for exterior repairs to scale house. I pulled that, so, Mr. Harris, I was just going to ask, what are, what is the plan in there? I didn't see any.
In the specifications, which, I don't have a copy of it, but what was said in the specifications, just remove all of the, it has the old wooden, probably some of it recognizes, two-one-eleven siding on it, a lot of it's riding off. All of that will be removed, we'll replace it with plywood and then put already poured siding on it, includes painting, replacing the windows, replacing the metal roof on the building, haul the trim, taking the stairs down, reconstructing those. Haul paintings included, except on the stairs, because on the infrastructure, we're going to let those dry off for a while, and then we'll go back and paint those ourselves.
So pretty much complete overall?
Yes, sir.
That's all. Anybody else have any questions on that?
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Harris, this is to the scale house at the transfer station?
No, sir, that's, no, this is the one in the mine.
Rock mine. Okay. It just says, my, my thing says exterior repairs to the scale house, I didn't know which scale house, which one of the transfer station to.
You're right. You are correct. No, we actually did some similar work to that one about, I don't know, maybe four or five years ago.
Yes, this is that mine.
It's, it's sorely needed, it's, it's a, it's a pretty shaky ground, as it is now, but it's just something that's needed to be done for a little while now. Anybody else have any comments, questions? Not that I'll entertain a motion to approve, unfortunately. Motion by Commissioner Flynn, second by Commissioner Stapleton, all in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number ten, award bid and authorize county administrator to submit order with great power for eight road graders for public works. I also pulled that one. The reason I pulled this, gentlemen, is I've been talking to some of the great crew out in the county, and according to the one-twenty LVR road grader you see on there is a lighter road grader with less horsepower, and I think it's causing a lot of the ripples you're seeing in these roads because it's so light, it wants to bounce going down the road, so I made a few phone calls this afternoon, and we have the cap representative, rainbar representative here, Mr. Todd Salin. If I can get you to come up, Mr. Salin, just a few questions for you. But my idea is to go to the heavier road grader, the one-forty GC that you see there, is just a little more money if you figure it out. Per month, it's about two hundred and fifty dollars a month per road grader to get that bigger road grader, and heavier road grader. I see there's only about six hundred dollars in the purchase price difference if you was to buy them, but on the lease side, it's quite a bit more, or not quite a bit, but it's about three thousand dollars more on the lease side for that bigger road grader. What, is it just the interest, or what's causing that?
The interest is the same on them, but there's a difference in the, on the residual value on the lease.
Okay.
They're really close, so it kind of offsets that difference in sale price. But they are really close, but the one-forty, you know, is a bigger, heavier grader.
Yes, sir.
And I know it says it was six of the smaller and two of the larger, so however you, if you wanted to do all of the bigger ones, or however you wanted to split that up, it didn't matter to us. Be good with, however you decide.
Well, for, you know, I just want to try it one round here, since we do half one year and half the next year, is to try the bigger road graders and see if, if that makes a difference, you know, what we're doing on these county grades. And, so it's not a problem availability-wise, getting eight of the bigger ones versus six and two?
No, we've checked on it, and we're, we're good either way.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
I don't know, Chairman, since you said that, I don't have a greater motive, but I have family that live on some road that's greater, and there's concern about some rock that we pulled up, does that help feed that rock down and keep it down, a line rock?
The heavier grader? Yeah, it, it would. The county's always kind of ran the smaller grader costs and things, but over the last several years, we've been running a couple of bigger graders, and, I mean, there's a difference, it's a bigger, heavier machine, so, and for the difference, there's not much difference in the cost, so I think it would have been a better town.
Mr. Chairman, on the heels, is there any other, other, the size, are there any other features that the one-forty has over the other?
That one-forty does come standard with a slope meter on it, so he can, the grader operator can actually see the slope in the road.
That's what I was.
That, that would make a big difference.
Mr. Christian, would you?
Yes, sir. I mean, I'm glad you pulled this out, I also asked you to pull it. I'm just, what I'm curious about is, and honestly, I didn't have time to do this, but each one of these, these, especially like your top three, I don't, I'm not familiar with their model numbers, the horsepower, the similarities, the differences, and I haven't, it being a holiday weekend, I don't have a lot of time to try to research it myself. I would like, if, if this board agrees, is there any way we can get, put this on the next agenda and give me a couple more weeks until I'm a little more comfortable with this effect, availability of the equipment? I just, I haven't studied it, and, you know, the difference between the models and the manufacturers, I want to make sure that we're, you know, we're making the biggest thing for our book, cost per horsepower, et cetera, et cetera.
Is that going to affect, since we're doing this so early, is that going to affect the availability of the road graders a couple of weeks?
It, it should, but, I mean, you know how things are, delivery times he's had, so quicker the, the better, of course.
But this is going, this is for October one going forward, right? This, the lease we're working on now?
Yeah, we're, we're ordering these now, so that we have them available.
When?
Possibly in the fiscal year. That's correct. On these, if you take the largest ones on, all of these other manufacturers, they're still considerably less expensive than any of the others. That machine is two hundred and sixty-one thousand, one forty-seven. You've got one here at two seventy-nine, one forty-four. Well, actually, I don't understand, there's one thing on here that's a little bit different, but I'm not familiar with this one that's on here at all, and then your gears, or gears, two eighty-one.
I don't, I mean, I don't have a problem with coming back and revisiting it, if that's what we need to do. I just wanted, while you were here, I just wanted to ask a few questions about, you know, the graders, and do you think that'll make a difference? What I'm looking at is a bunch of ridges in the road, and I've talked to several operators, and they think it's, it's too light for the one-twenty is versus the other one, so.
The, the one-twenty, it was the smaller grader, so, I mean, there is a difference in the two, for sure.
And that's the next size up is the one-forty? There's not one in between, it's one quarter of the one-forty.
Mr. Chairman, I was about to ask, just sitting here, listening to us talk about this, and somebody, I'm asking, I'm asking, with some of the new technology and other features that come on these, is there training available for these folks if they need it?
We, we come out when we deliver the new equipment, and we do operator training on every, every.
Some of them, I have that option here, if they need some of that.
Also, I want to ask if, if you went to a longer lease term, I mean, what's, when you buy a road grader, what's the factor warranty on a road grader when you buy it, if you're just finding out, right?
Yeah, you can make it wherever you want.
But what's the standard?
If they're friendly auto, well, the standard warranty is just a one-year warranty, but you get extended warranty on there, and then it's kind of customized based on how many hours you're putting on there. So it's based on fifteen hundred hours a year, which the county gets every bit of that.
Well, I was just, would it save the county any money if you extended that lease to a three-year lease? I know we wear road graders out in two years, I don't think.
No. We, we used to do the five-year, years, then we started doing the two-year, and there was a, a big savings there, and they've gotten a little closer, but from what we've seen, we run the numbers, two-year, three-year, four-year.
It affected the cost of the lease too, because their resale value on machines was what the initial conversation was, they were selling a machine that was newer and able to do that thing back out in the marketplace. It affected our lease terms.
Well, it's just, I, I didn't know, I, I just wanted to ask, I didn't know if it made any difference one way or the other in green power, if you extended that lease and run it another year, and say, whatever, how many hours, twenty, four hundred hours, whatever, does it make it any less expensive for the county, or does it make it more expensive, or does it change at all?
Yeah, it changes when you change the term of the lease, and we have found, what we went to the two-year was, you know, quoted a bunch of different ways, which it came out best, but the two-year, also, you don't get into expensive tires, you know, on five-year lease, you don't change tires out at least twice, and there ain't that much tire expense.
Well, that's another question, they just got the regular tires on them, correct? And, well, it's my understanding, and talking to a couple of operators, that we were changing, well, of course, that was with the bi-sply tires that feature, and I guess that, we were wearing them out a lot quicker than they were on the regular tires, so that's why I'm asking a question. Anybody else? That's all, I got, do we want to go back and revisit this, or do y'all want to go on tonight, or?
Normally, I just, I haven't familiarized myself. Normally, historically, like with the Tractors, we have the bid specs from all of them, I'm just not familiar with the models, the cost per horsepower, I just feel a little bit, Bob had researched it a little bit, now I feel more confident on what I was looking on, but, you know, y'all want to go? And I, I'll abstain, whatever the problem.
Anybody else have a problem with putting it off till the next, the next meeting?
Todd, you can give these things if we wait another couple of weeks, can't you? The data's going to put you in a bind.
We, we can, so we can.
Okay. Okay. We'll just bring that back to the next meeting if you don't mind.
Mr. Harris, do you have those specs from the other, just, just the top three? I mean, I don't care about the other ones, but the top three?
We'll get you all.
Is that they turn in? Can I get that?
Sure.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Well, thank you. I appreciate you saying.
Thanks, sir. Thanks, guys.
We've got finishes up, the consent agenda. Moving on, we see Commissioner Allen, Commissioner Land, that's him.
Yeah, I do, I just want to, I want to tell the, tell the board about an accident that happened on County Road two fifty, Easter Sunday. I got a call from a couple of folks that live out there, I think either one of them are here tonight, but those whoop-de-woos that we call them, they're going to kill somebody. A guy from South Carolina was moving into our area, he was on his trip down here, and my family member told him not to go down two fifty because of those. He went down anyway. His, his trailer came off of, off the hitch, it had a lock, it was locked, it was properly attached to the truck, had a lock through the hitch, it came, it came disconnected, started to sway, SUV passed into him at the same time, had to swerve off of the south side of the road, I believe, they told me, overcorrected, went back across the highway, flipped the power pole, broke the power pole, those folks were out hour for several hours on Easter Sunday. Not very accommodating when you have a family cookout, the power goes out, but nevertheless, what's more important is life. And, you know, I don't know if we can expedite those, Mr. Harris, or, or what our problem is, but somebody's going to get killed out there, and, and the, the folks that live on that road that travel it daily, I hear about it every week. When we come, and we went out there and we painted some lines on the road six, eight months ago, that's the last they've heard, that's the last they've seen, I know you and I have talked about it a little bit. Somebody's going to get killed out there on two fifty, and I hope that we can expedite or do something about that quicker than what we've been doing. We got three hundred thousand, I believe, in the budget, and I just want to see someone's mother, father, daughter, son, get, get killed out there. It's, it's extreme. But that, you know, it's just.
What did you say happened out there?
We weren't paying attention. I wasn't really, it played me, it was weak. So, a guy, a folk, a guy living in this area, husband and wife, going down two fifty with an exposed trailer, had a lock through the hitch, it was properly attached to the wall. He hits the whoop-de-woos, it comes disconnected, the safety chains catch it, it starts swaying, a SUV carrying, I know two people, because the passenger was injured, minor injuries was injured, and ours is colliding with the trailer that had swerved out in the bear lane, attached to the truck, went off the shoulder of the road, overcorrected, went back across the highway, flipped the light pole, knocked the light pole down, required some injuries, and Swan Valley had to call guys in to come out and fix it.
I apologize, Commissioner Land, I was looking at something out this morning. I want to make sure I was clear on my eyes.
As you say, I had something similar like that happen on one thirty-six, and it wouldn't be great, we got to admit it, it definitely helped out. It was a small trailer, I know exactly what you're going to do.
Well, there's two spots there on that road, and we all know where they're at, and the folks that aren't, you know, I get folks that live out there and tell me, hey, I dropped down Mattress Factory, and I cut across Rocky Saint, or, or Morris Baptist Church Road, so I don't have to get them, because they're, they're dangerous, and it takes me a little longer to get home, but I, I try to avoid it.
Mr. Harris, is it possible, I mean, I don't, I don't have a problem, we got to prove somewhere that we can pull off, and I don't know where they're working, but there's something to do, that's without that. I'm, I'm just saying, if somebody in my district is working on something, that would be.
I know there's spread thing too, but I, I tell you, you know, our folks did the repairs on Waverly, that's over the years, right? I did, I did a big job.
Yeah, I can, I can tell you, if y'all want to know what the schedule is.
Yeah, well, that's what I was going to ask.
I, I knew that was coming. The schedule is that, and I told Commissioner Land that we're wrapping up the chip seal roads, which just got chip sealed, I think, last week, so they're finishing out those initial ones that we were doing.
Initials?
We have a crew that will be going out to two fifty, and we'll probably get some crew out to, it's kind of debatable, we're not sure about one thirty-seven yet, we may go to one thirty-seven with another crew, but that's the plan right now, just the way of people out there, two fifty.
The repairs on one thirty-seven, where, where exactly on one thirty-seven are they?
Well, the worst part is north of Waverly.
Between Waverly and interstate, or?
Yeah, it's going down real bad with four, I mean, there's, it's got five, it's eight inches deep out there, and I think that's honestly where they liked it years ago, is where it's sunk. But those are the two that we plan to go to now, it's two fifty and twenty-seven. And then honestly, if there's one end or the other of that, where those things are that you think is worse, and you can have them start on that, and what's going to happen is we'll go out there, we typically cut that material out, like we did on one thirty-six and other places, we'll cut it out, try to get the bad material out, pack it back in there, get the full density we can on it, and then let it stay that way for a while, and we cut more amount, get several on ready at one time, and then go out there and pay for it.
Well, we, Mr. Chairman, sorry. We, we patched these spots, I know, at least twice in the past fifteen years. Can we do, can we, can we do some soil horns there, where those are located, to determine truly what the problem is? Is it clay, is it a, a slow developing sinkhole, is it, I mean, obviously, what we're doing is lasting eight, ten years, and it's. Is it, I mean, obviously what we're doing is lasting eighteen years and it's going back to where we started. Is there, can we do some soil borings to determine?
Yeah, we can do that.
So we don't, ten years, we're not having the same conversation again?
Well, my hope is that DOT comes in and fixes the road. Ideally, I would prefer that...
They don't prevent the...
Yeah, I would prefer they come in and do the borings and it'd be a part of a larger contract to go in there and mitigate.
Well, I don't think, I want to wait five years for DOT to come along and fix those whoop-de-whoos.
So, no, 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 we're talking about that, I'm talking about the... DOT before they paved it, I'm sorry. DOT before they paved it with the borings on those bad spots. But it's no different than DOT doing borings on the bad spots on 51. They had some correction to them, but they're back too. So there's not a hundred percent perfect correction to it, I guess is what I'm saying, even with them. I don't know if this time it would be better off putting that money and continuing to fix it instead of doing it. The board's gonna tell us there's an issue there, but I don't know that it's something every day will be corrected. It'll be a few times, is what I'm saying, but I mean...
Well, instead of going out there and cutting that pavement out, you said the money's been approved to pave 250?
Yes, 250, but half of 250 is too far out, though.
It's too far out? Well, my question was on that, instead of going out and cutting pavement out and redoing it, if it's three or four years out and paved it completely and fixed it right? Could you just put a level and force oil to fix the bad spots right now instead of cutting out the pavement?
There may be some areas where you could do some of that, but I don't believe it's been worked on most of that.
I think it's too deep. I think the ditch is too deep, but everybody brings it back to it.
What we would typically do is go out there and cut the pavement and dig down. We take, use the grade all, honestly, it's so difficult to work with these things when you're working on a piece. You know, these things that are fifty feet long or a hundred feet long, in this particular case, there are lots of them. We take the grade all out and then dig down. We get into clay, we just dig down as deep as we can reasonably deep dig and put material back and build it back up. What I would prefer is if we continue doing it that way, get the density that we can get on it. And then with, with the DOT project, go in there and do borings, let the engineers get involved, and then come up with a mitigation plan if we're onto the soils. Where that's perfect, where that actually is. I'm confident that that's what it is. It's either a combination of on suitable soils or... There could be some sinkhole that could be out there, if there's quite a bit of sediment out there on the down end, but...
Mr. Harris, when he says the density, I think we just ground up the driver, supplies and stuff, that would have been so bad.
While we're out there, we're trying on more of those areas, the traffic drives on, it helps back it down. So we'll put rock in there a little higher than we need it repaved, and then we'll come back and do a ton of cut on it, right before we do put the asphalt on it.
One, I mean, one thing that I, that I, I'm sorry, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Land?
Um, one thing that, that, I just want to make sure that we try to get it right. I would hate that, not that DOT would overlook it, but that they say, no, we're kind of here to resurface and repave. And then after they're gone, five years later, we got our dips. If there's something that we can remedy, remedy the dips and maybe patch it with our machine and kind of, you know, skip on the asphalt? Because we know it's gonna get resurfaced in three, five, but make sure that we get that base right. They may do that, I don't know. I haven't had a road page, page in my district to experience exactly what they do, but, um, you know, those whoop-de-whoos.
Well, I watched them do it out, they did it on Highway ninety out there, they cut it out, I don't know how deep it was, five, seven feet, looked like a mink. And dug it all out and redone it, but I noticed the dip free coming back in there.
You're right, you're right, just west down, there are areas there that like, it had been a couple of years, it seemed like, and it's already back.
Two years, I heard you say.
Well, I, I mentioned this to Mr. Harris, but obviously some of you guys may sometimes have some experience on this. But I, I spoke to a couple of different paving contractors that, that we do business with in private sector. They suggested, and Mr. Harris was familiar with this, like a, put down a cloth. Instead of going straight back lime rock, you could do the cloth, which is a barrier between the clay to try to, for there to be some of the moisture getting to the rock, the lime rock. Or, which is more expensive, but the materials are around in Florida, they bring it in by rail, but granite, they call it GAV. It's more expensive, but the granite doesn't move around as much, but it's affected by moisture bad, but, you know, maybe that's a better long-term fix, I don't know.
They put the geo-whatever it is, that fabric down on ninety, did they, when they redone it? Or do you know?
I don't remember if they did, but geotextile fabric is a pretty good material for using when you've got problem soils. Because it helps to eliminate some of the shear effect where you've got good soils and bad soils, because you can spread that out. That's why I say, if, if the major work is done to address this, when the road is completely reconstructed, and they can go beyond the limits of what we're trying to patch. And get way on, past that, and they put some fabric down or something. But, I mean, we'll do it any way that you want to do it. What we typically do is dig it down with grade all, replace the materials, put materials, pack it as tight as we can. And then pave it, and it should last for the five years that we're waiting. And again, if there's one end of that area that we're gonna be repairing that you think you would prefer to restart on, it's five of us, just let us know.
My thing was in Scranton Scott is, is from 193rd back east to 51, and, and all of those sections of those whoop-de-whoos are in that section.
So it would get covered under the paving, please?
Uh, of this first half of, yeah. But I don't, you know, my thing is, is like, I don't want to wait and do nothing, waiting on DOT to get here and, and three more wrecks or five more, or just one more wreck, you know, it was awful life.
Just, so just to follow from what you said, the guys that finished up with the chip seal, we're ready to go to 137 and 250, as it may.
So, I mean... No, they just did that last week.
Any estimates out there, I don't know, two, three, maybe forty?
Depends on the weather, depends on the soils you're running to. I mean, we have one grade all that we'll be using out there, and we have a crew out there. You've got a lot of traffic that we're trying to manage at the same time. So those types of things just take a little bit longer, because the traffic that you're trying to maneuver around where you would. But, you know, it's like we've done on the other ones, we go in there and start, and just stay with it until we're finished. So start next week? I'm okay starting next week. And honestly, that, that was the plan, we just gotta get them in there when we get wrapped up with the chip seal. You know, the chip seal takes a long time. We start it when it's drier, drier time of year, because you get in the middle of the summer, sometimes it takes forever to get the chip seal in, because it stays wet. So we've got those projects finished for now, and we can start the asphalt patching on these other areas, so that's the plan.
Anybody else?
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. County Attorney, Mr. Turner, do you have anything?
Yes, sir.
Under General Business, Title Number Thirteen, Discuss the Possible Board Action, roadside litter pickup, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I provided the information that we got from our bids. You have that in fact, that we went ahead and put, reinserted information from previous conversations on this litter pickup. I'm gonna guess that maybe some of you, we see fewer calls now on litter pickup, although there's trash being thrown out all day and all night around the county. But when grass starts growing and covers some of it up, we still don't have a sufficient number of inmates to pick it all up. But now you have some pricing from the companies, I believe at least one of these is working on some DOT projects. But this is a result of a bid. So it appeared that three hundred, or thirty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars per what we will call a mowing cycle, five hundred and fifty miles of paved road. What they are typically doing is, DOT is staying ahead of the tractors, but we all know, we can mow five miles a day or ten miles a day and pick up all the trash. And within a couple of days, you've got trash back down there. So, you have lots of information here, I just need to know what desire the board is. I mean, clearly, we prefer having more inmates than we have.
So they were pulling this on a per-cycle basis, or?
Well, no, they were, their bid was per mile. So one thing that I thought of was that if we were to write an agreement with one of these companies, we'd make sure that we write in on an as-needed basis, give us the option of calling them here. But if it prevents that, a commissioner's gonna get a call and have ten miles of road somewhere that doesn't fit with the mowing cycle. And they're gonna want it picked up, and we may or may not have the inmates to accomplish that. So we need to have the ability to call, rather than turn them loose and say, okay, go do five hundred and fifty miles. My preference would be clearly have them ahead of our mowers. But like I said, we can mow and it's gonna be a while before we're coming back mowing that same route, and then we have litter on the roads again. So I just need to know what you would like to do if we don't have enough inmates to keep up with it.
Any questions, Mr. Harris, on this?
I might comment, Mr. Harris.
There's one?
I'll just say where I'm at, I, I... I had a brother contract with one of these two companies on as-needed basis, you know, to get them to come do it when we need them to do it. And honestly, I know that the, there's only two companies here, I don't have the public's looking at this or not, but there's only two, there's only two bidders under sixty-six hundred dollars apart on a whole cycle of fifty, five hundred miles. One of them did fifty-seven dollars per mile, and the other one did sixty-nine dollars per mile. The sixty-nine is a local company, the other one is not local. In, in, in hopes of trying, trying to stay local and on an as-needed basis, I, I don't know the type of company, but says they're from Iowa. I'm leaning that way, just because I feel like, one, they're local, it's not a lot of money, and we're gonna use them as an as-needed basis. And my, my thought process is, I mean, they may have their equipment, their employees scattered all across two states, I don't know. If they're here, then we call them, they may have a quicker response time than if they were coming from two counties away. Now, I may be off-base on that, but, you know, I don't know. That's kind of where I'm at with it. Mr. Pratt?
Mr. Chairman, you may be a little bit off-base there for this. When you go out to bid like this, the local preference has been done away with. Does it allow us that we used to have from the state to be able to do that?
So you can't?
For consideration, yes, sir.
If you can't give preference to local, contract, what are you telling them?
Correct.
Throw that out, will you? I tried.
Well, I was like on the same line, so you left our all place.
Yeah, I agree with everything, Mr. Chairman, give mine, but I like the as-needed basis, because that's kind of the key, I think.
That was the only thing that I could see that would give us the relief, the peace, if we don't want to be stuck in a contract. But we're telling them absolutely every day, you're gonna be out here picking up trash.
But on an as-needed basis, I'm assuming that you would have to give them one complete cycle through the county, bring them in.
Authorize us to sit down and negotiate with them on this, because I'd like to see on as-needed basis, they'll probably get them one on as-needed basis, even two weeks notice or something. And then they may have a minimum number of cycles if they want as well. But if they'll authorize us to sit down and talk to them, we'll try to make sure that we put enough in there so that we have them available when we need them. And if we're not paying them or we don't see them, if we have sufficient numbers of inmates.
I would, I'm good with all of that. I would just also like to add, in the as-needed part, that we give them a, like a response time. And say, hey, we need you to come handle this road, like within a couple of weeks, or within thirty days, not, and then we'll get there, we'll see you at Christmas-type conversation. So could you do like a, hey, you know, if we notify, you need help, we need you to respond within two weeks or thirty days?
I'm sorry, if we put this out on a bid, Mr. Pratt, can we go back and negotiate that? Or does it have to be by the terms of the bid, or we gotta rebid?
Quite frankly, I have not seen the bid documents for this particular item to see. I recall the last time that I opened out, last year, maybe the year before, there was a response time in there. And there was the requirement for to be able to be called on that as-needed basis, but quite frankly, I just haven't seen that.
But saying that's not in there on an as-needed basis or whatever?
There's no guarantee of not work to any contractor. So it really can come down to us negotiating what we want. What was bid was per mile price, and that's what they responded to. There's no guarantee of any number of miles. We told them what our average number of miles was on paved roads, and that's what they responded to.
Does either of these companies do mowing?
They may both do mowing, I don't know. We didn't bid on it. I'm, I'm pretty sure the first one does, the top one. I really don't, I'm not familiar with the other one. But they very likely do both.
Mr. Harris, I just would like to add, I bet there's more discussion that needs to be had. I mean, as Mr. Harris says, I don't, it's gonna come down to response time, and I just, I don't know how this is going to work. So I'm a little bit of a shot, I mean, I was always a player of trying to get a few more guys and just have our crew just going all the time. But I'm not gonna argue the fact and deal a shot. But the problem is, and I'm sure y'all have heard or made it to, when people call and complain about it, they want somebody out there that, hey, not two weeks from now, not four weeks from now, not six weeks. They want to see some results. And I, I agree with that, I mean, it looks terrible, it looks terrible, it's terrible for Swan County, where people have to see them. So saying all that, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm fine, we're trying to see if we can get back something happening with this, but I, I don't know what my expectations are. But I, I mean, I will, I will take care of Swan County and the roads and whichever road we have to get there. If this doesn't work, I'm gonna stay on top of it until we figure out something that does.
We can bring, I mean, we have to bring back whatever the results of this discussion will be, the board.
Well, I would like, if either of them does mowing, I would like to see what that mowing and garbage pickup together looks like versus just the garbage pickup.
I thought the most important thing that you had shared with me was that all this stuff be done in your district and not the other.
Well, that's great.
Is that right?
Must have been while he was sleeping, my mom was talking to him.
He was texting.
But if that's possible, I mean...
We can bid, we can certainly bid the mowing.
Well, I'd just like to see what it looks like, because in my mind, if you got a guy out there mowing and he's providing the mowing and the trash pickup, he's gonna get it done on his timeline. In other words, he's gonna be picking up the garbage ahead of the mowing. And if you got this guy and you got your mowing crew, how is that gonna work? Are they gonna get here in time to pick up the garbage ahead of the mowers? Is it gonna be a big conflict with our crew versus his crew on getting it done on a schedule? So in my thinking, if you went out and bid the mowing too, so they were doing the trash pickup and the mowing, if it's reasonable, or, you know, I, I just, I don't know, I think that's the way to go.
I don't have any problems, if you put a bid package, you're gonna be able to do that.
Mr.?
I, I agree with that too, I understand what you're saying. If they do it all, if they know how, they're gonna pick garbage up, trash up, they know how they're gonna be doing space, they're gonna space out with the mowing. If we get someone to come in there like, remains the winner, be a reward to them, they may not be able to be there during that time, like when, when they're, they're there. So if, 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 if the staff can put together something, something that these guys can pick up trash and mow, I think that would be a sooner to, uh... You don't have to sit down and just wait.
I just want to be clear, I'm not after any county employee's job, so don't come at me shouting. I'm just, I just want to see what it looks like, you know? And I'm sure there's other, if we ever went that way, there's somewhere else to put those people to work. So I don't think anybody's gonna lose their job over it, but I sure would like to see what that scenario looks like.
Yeah, we'd do that. We would probably get some numbers from them pretty quickly, even without bidding. They know what their appropriate price is gonna be. They know what their per mile price is gonna be. And we can see what the payment, uh, what DOT is paying on that.
Well, if we could just get it, you know, something pretty close, you know, and compare it, you know?
You tell me, I can go, we can do a formal bid or we can get the...
Let's just do the formal bid and let's see what it looks like.
The formal?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
If that's our...
No, it's time, you know, we talking about how many, how many, uh, pounds a year?
Yeah. And we gonna be specific on all that?
Right now, we're trying to do, we're trying to get four cycles done during the bombing season. And all of that really, as you know, has everything to do with weather too.
But, and the reason why I mention that is that's us trying to do it with, with what we have. And should we advertise it at five cycles to try to get it? Because you guys know, sometimes these roads can get away from us.
Well, I would think I'd bid it per cycle and then decide how many cycles I wanted to do.
Yeah, that's...
Well, a minimum of four.
I would do similar to what we did with mowing, I'm just saying, the number of miles per cycle. And it could be three to five cycles.
Yeah, that's kind of where I, I think it would be. Anybody else?
Now, with the wildflower preservation, we might not need the one mowing cycle.
All now. Uh, anything else on this before we move on?
No, sir.
Is there any additional agenda items? Anybody? Public concern or comments, anybody wishing to speak?
Item number eleven skipped.
Oh, I'm sorry, I got fooled, I was supposed to tell you that. Shoot the messenger and all that.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, would you please, Mr. Harris, a clarification?
Sorry, Mr. Harris.
On, on the mowing, so are we wanting to go, come back with an negotiated agreement for consideration or are you gonna hold off on that, I'm not talking about that, I mean, the, uh, garbage pickup?
I would think we need to hold off and, and do the bid, mowing, garbage together.
Combination?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's what I think, and the rest of y'all, if you're in agreement with us, we're not trying to force anybody.
I do need at least a consensus on that.
I'm good.
I think we have, I think that's right, yes, sir.
You wanna go back?
Yeah, yeah, we gotta get back on this one.
She said it was a buggo, about one give, other one give, one?
Okay, so, uh, Jimmy showed me the two parcels of property. I sent that to our in-house surveyor along with Greg Bailey, pointing it back to the in-house surveyor. And he said, yes, he could do that for a boundary only. And I did frankly send you those two parcels, but it's the parcels that Jimmy Norris confirmed for forty-two hundred.
More, additional? More, more do you stand on that?
I don't know.
It's sixty, it's right at sixty-four acres, I believe, thirty and a, thirty-four and change or something.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
You said forty-two, what'd you say?
Forty-two.
And so, on item number seven, approval was a task order, we're not part of professional service, we'd be adding sixty-two acres, an additional cost of forty-two hundred dollars to get the boundary survey done on that. Has, I get a motion approved, or is there more discussion on that?
I'd offer motion to approve, get them both done. I'd encourage, uh, Mr. Pratt to ask Mr. Parker to expedite.
Motion by Commissioner Land, second by Commissioner Hale, all in favor of? All opposed, same sign, motion approved. Now we get into the public concerns and comments, anybody wishing to speak? Name and address for the record, please.
Motion, sucker, one four five eight one, one hundred second pass, by over. Uh, y'all pulled the item, that's right on that tower, Andy said last time he was here, uh, two hundred foot was the max. But listen here, it's a monopole, two hundred and ten feet. So one of them, I know it's only ten feet, but one of them ain't accurate. And, uh, what I was thinking on this old CSX and Andy AT&amp;T mess, uh, if, and I'm, I'm limited on my knowledge, but, uh, if I'd prefer, I'm still pushing on that, that camouflage. And, uh, according to reading I did, uh, a two-hundred-foot tower, the average communications tower is, is fifty to, uh, two-hundred feet. And that's everywhere you look. And, uh, so we're pretty flat here, all right? The, uh, I'd much rather see a, uh, you know, one, two-hundred-foot tower here and let them go forty miles somewhere else, it's supposed to cover forty miles. I'd rather see them go forty miles elsewhere and put another camouflage tower than put, put a two-hundred and sixty-six. But there's questionable, Andy's line, well, Andy misrepresented the truth, I might say. Uh, if he said, and he stated right here, that it could go over two-hundred foot. This person's either misinformed or Andy's misleading us. So please pay attention to that.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Jackson?
Yes, sir.
Name and address for the record, please.
Andy Jackson, one six nine oh six, County Road, two fifty. That's where I'm, well, the, the red was in front of my house. And the part that upset me about all this, we sat there what, eight or nine months ago, y'all was all arguing about who would go get what road paid, and we was busting about two feet. And, you know, we agreed then, something had to be done. And Mr. Harris said he could go out there and fix those bad spots. Well, you know, y'all were grading the dirt off from the side of it, and what we told him right before that. And then here, here I see these bad spots, I see lines drawn in the road. I said, hey, they are gonna do something about it, but nothing's been done. And I, I ride the road every day, somebody's gonna get killed sooner or later. And this, I mean, we sat here right now and I've heard next week it started on. Let's make sure it gets started on and done. I mean, it's, it's bad. I, I had rode, I've heard y'all talk about one thirty-seven and the forty-nine, or, yeah, forty-nine. And one day, I come from Gainesville, I hit one thirty-seven down there on twenty-seven, I drove all the way to one thirty-six. Don't compare to the two fifty, I can tell you that right now. I know y'all, in y'all's districts, y'all gonna say it does, but it, and I'm saying, you know, y'all gonna say, well, I'm in that district. It don't compare, but it's, the four or five bad spots that's in that road has got to be addressed. Or, you know, I, I don't know if the county can get sued over somebody getting killed, but I bet Morgan and Morgan would like to jump on it if it happens. And I don't wanna see that. We need, we need to get it done. I hope, I heard next week, and like I said, eight or nine months ago, I heard he was gonna fix it. And I saw, saw evidence of stuff being done and then it disappeared. But, uh, you know, y'all talking about chip seal, you might need to slow down on some chip seal, keep somebody from dying somewhere else. Whatever, whatever, how you schedule your work. I know you, you schedule your work, I realize that, but, you know, sometimes you gotta do what you gotta do. And we gotta do this, people, it's, it's bad. By how you fixing to move out there, you, you gotta go over everyone in bad spots to get where you live.
I know, I know, it's like, I, I know what you're saying.
And it's, uh, my wife retired in January, thirty-first, and she sits there on her carport with me. And there, right down there below her, where all this guts started at, right there by my house, she said, what in the world is that noise? And these trailers coming down the road and, and people and everything, and it's just famine and famine and bouncing all over the road. You gotta pay attention on that road, because you could be driving down there and somebody hit them holes wrong and they over there in your lane before you know it. And you better, when you meet somebody, you better pay attention. Even if you are riding, if you all right, they may not be all right. But it's bad, and I, we need something done with people.
I don't disagree, and even though I'm District Five, I agree it needs to be fixed first, so.
Okay.
I'm just, you know, public safety is above anything else in my book, so I'm right there with Mr. Jackson. We have a, uh, commitment to get started next week.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Your turn.
Mr. Harris, name and address for the record?
Tony Cameron, one one two one two. Cameron, one thirty, uh, one one two one two, seven one seven seven, very loud. Um, I live basically on two fifty, my house place is two fifty. But I turn, I don't wanna get out there on two fifty till I get out on the road. So I pull out, I have my driveway coming in from the side. But, but Mr. Jackson stated what really needs to be done. And he, uh, he called me about it, and that's why I'm here, um, just to hear what you guys had to say about it. And when I look out, when you look out there, I drive that road every day. Uh, I, every single day, I, I go back for it. And people go around those dips in the road, they get on the wrong side of the road. You're coming and then a car's over here right facing you, and then it jerks back in, and then it gets past the big loops. And that's people that know the road. You also have the people who don't know the road. And that's what happened on Sunday, is people didn't know the road. But, uh, somebody is gonna get hurt bad out there if something's not done. And I know that Mr. Harris said he could get out there possibly next week, get things moving. Um, and that'd be great. I am glad to see that DOT has approved, paid the first half of it too. I know that it might be years before they do, but at least it's approved. Um, the other thing, there's a couple of other things that went on, uh, tonight that I just happen to be here to hear. One is about the road graders. It's fifty thousand dollars increase in the two-year that you lease it, if you do that. Um, and it may be well worth fifty thousand dollars, um, when you figure it out at two hundred and fifty dollars per month for a road grader for eight road graders.
It's thirty-six thousand dollars for two years is what the initial cost is.
For eight?
Yes, sir.
At two hundred and fifty dollars?
Well, you're doing six, we're already doing two, we're already doing two big road graders. This would just be adding the six to the two.
But I just want, you know, you to be good stewards of the taxpayers' money. And if that, if that is what we need, we certainly need to get it, if it's gonna make a big difference. Um, the other thing is on this garbage pickup out there on the side of the road, I can tell you this. I pick it up at least once a week in front of my house, and I load my Cagoff cart down with trash. People, people do not respect others, and they throw trash up and down the roads. But if you don't pick it up the day before that mower comes, you got a mess out there.
Confetti.
Well, it's really hard to get it picked up then. Uh, but I just, uh, those are two issues that y'all gotta handle that I'm glad that you have not met.
And I, I just wanna circle back to the road grader thing. The only reason I wanna, I just wanna try it on this one set of road graders. We swap out half the road graders every two years, or every year, half the road graders get swapped out. And I realize this would be a two-year deal on these, this set of road graders, but I, I just wanna see if it makes a difference in what we're giving.
As long as you have money, I don't care at all.
I just wanna explain where my thoughts are.
I understand it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just wanted to inform you all, we've had the opportunity to work with a team called, uh, the Team Deviant. This is a helicopter, uh, group that Sidorsky and Bullitt or Lockheed Martin are working together for, for the same company. But, um, they, uh, they're creating the replacement for the Apache helicopter. And they've come through on a test flight to this one county airport, refueled it, has a jet with it. It was heading up to Nashville. Then they came back through last Thursday to use more tests in our place and, and the videos and things. But, um, this is pretty cool that we've got a, we're just a small piece of the, of the helicopter that will replace the Apache helicopter the military uses. It's twin-blade, uh, they can run one blade or both, um, running two hundred and eighty-four miles an hour, lift fifty, fifty-three hundred pounds, do sixty-degree banking, um, maneuver in real tight areas. And, uh, again, it's really cool that have our guys fueling that, fuel, fueling that bird up and all the jet comes with it. And, uh, just being a small part of the testing that's happening, uh, for the next couple of ten years that we're using that in the military. But, um, just to give you some numbers on fueling, while we're talking about fueling, our budgets for this current year for fueling is of two hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars and change for the total. We already, um, taken in a hundred and seventy-one thousand, uh, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is what we did last year. The guys are working hard at fueling up these choppers that are here with Duke, stretching the panel lines along with air methods and the other jets that's coming through and turn those. But, um, this, things are happening in the airport and it's pretty cool to see the differences being made out there. But, um, but next time I hear that bird's coming through, then I wish I noticed. That picture and the videos do not do justice for the amount of power in that thing. You can hear it from a ways away, I think Randy would then probably hear it, uh, grabbing their, their...
You can feel it.
Good, good, you almost should know they're there. Um, something else I wanted to just mention a little briefly, uh, last Wednesday, had the ground, the ribbon cutting for the Discovery Trail, which is a project that the library worked on. Um, this heist set up along the Perish Trail, that procession, there's like a storyboard can be put there, it can be used for history or any other kind of theme that you wanna have. But it was funded by pilgrims, there's some, some money we got from them, is a part that was given to this, this project. Um, but, um, really cool events, had a good representation there from pilgrims, and there's some synths, lots of crosstalks, and, uh, special ones there. But, uh, one of the best things that happened was Jason Schoeffels, that are also newly represented. So, um, it's always good to get him hurt and, uh, and understand what, uh, we're about too. So, um, doing a time with him, but, um, it's, uh, good to see this first coming through. That's all I got, thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Mr. President, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Anyone else, any other comments? One more? Right, uh, item number sixteen, administrators' comments, Mr. Harris.
No, sir, I don't have anything else.
Moving on, board members, inquiries, requests, and comments, we start with you, Mr. Flaner.
Mr. Chairman, I didn't take anything, I had nothing to say, that's me. I was very...
Take saved up, is what you say.
No, no, I, uh, I'd like to say that, uh, it's good to be here, we had a safe Easter. Uh, I think, uh, it was great last week, and, uh, fair, open affair. We coordinated, came very well, very professionally. Now, I was in, thank you, Chief, I had out to, out to two guys, not, not you, but, but his professionalism. Uh, I was one of, one of my neighbors last week and how these guys performed their services. I think that was unique, uh, to you, that professionalism, and a person that's transitioned over and the family not knowing that, I think that's very unique. And, and I always say, our staff and our attorneys and our, and our commissioners here. Our wedded opposition commissioner, Lynn, my commissioner, got some things on hundred and ninety-three, but... Yeah, Mr. Jackson, you, you correct. It is a truck bad, but that, that's where we had a lot of dips. Uh, I lost, I almost lost my truck going down there and, and getting a dip. But, uh, I know there's, there's a time and a place for all things, and, uh, I, I'm confident that, that staff will get this done. And, uh, it is trucking bad, and I, and I've heard complaints, you know, and, uh, about the possibility of someone getting fatality, something that we don't, we don't, uh, you know, there's nothing happening, so, uh, I encourage... there's nothing happening, so, uh, I encourage public work to get it done. Let's get it done and, uh, to make everybody happy. Commissioner Land, you'd be excited about it, so would I, all, all the residents in that area out there. So, uh, I just feel comfortable that it's gonna happen. It will happen and we'll all be satisfied with it. Thank you. My two constituents, uh, constituents out here, Mr. Perkins and Mr. Blue, which they are live for, District Two C tonight and sitting out there together and glad to see that.
You table on the game street?
No, sir. No, sir. We got, just believe it, yeah. But I, I'm glad to see those guys here today. You know, I see someone in, um, District Two that make me feel good, a good environment, kind of government. Make our county be a very good county. I'm glad to see everybody, but I just wanna bring that out, that these teams out here. We'll be doing a good mission in the future, so, happy to be here and I'm glad to be with you. Chairman, yeah?
I appreciate it. Mr. Flynn, I was just fixing up to cut you off here in review. Mr. Stapleton?
Uh, just a couple of quick things. A few months ago, myself and you and Mr. Norris, we went to Tallahassee and, and, uh, met some folks over there. It just happened to me that they was over there, um, Chuck Brandon's son, Chase Brandon. This, that was probably four months ago, I guess it was over there. Well, about two months ago, I got a phone call and it happened to be this young man. And he's affiliated with the governor's office, has to do with scheduling, yes, and different things. I don't know his exact title, but, um, this was about two months ago, he called us and, uh, just asked for a couple of contacts and said that, uh, the governor may be entertaining coming to Grand Open for the fair. And I, I gave him a couple of numbers that he requested to try to, try to see if he could put that together. And, uh, just wanted to say publicly, thank, thank you to him for, uh, reaching out to us and, and putting that together. For those who didn't know, the governor did, did come to, uh, the opening ceremonies of the fair. Uh, spent a couple hours at the fair with his, one of his daughters, company, everybody rides. And, uh, he spent a lot of time with constituents, myself, was there, and residents of the county. And, uh, just grateful to him to, to come over and, and show support for Swan County. Also, he's, he gave funding to us. I mean, he's, he's done a lot for us and I'm, I'm appreciative of that. But, uh, just wanna thank him and his office and, uh, Chase Brandon for that. Um, follow that, fair's on through the week, through Saturday. Just come out and join us, we're out there and have a good time. That's all that.
Thank you. Mr. Lamb?
Yes, sir, I'll follow that up with, uh, what Mr. Stapleton said. I want to just thank the fair board too, all those board members and volunteers and they, they, they worked their butts off for, not just this week, but weeks leading up to this and they, they do a good job, um, on a volunteer basis. And Mr. Scott, not so checking, you played your part there as well. Um, had the governor there and everything seemed to be pretty fluid on, uh, the events while he was here. So, that was good. As Mr. Scott mentioned, Representative Jason Schoeff, who will be replacing Brandon with the newly districted, and he was here last week, um, got to meet him a little bit, spend some time with him. Um, that's good. Um, there at Heritage Trail, uh, ribbon cutting. Um, Mandy, good to see Mandy here. Um, Mr. Blue, Mr. Perkins, Mr. Snowden, been wondering where you been? You know, I hope everybody had a good Easter. Um, God is good. I've been all the time. That's all I got.
Thank you. Mr. Hare?
I think all you guys stole the thunder, but I just wanna go-
You get to go last.
Yeah, he, he got to last. Yeah, but, but honestly, having the governor here was a big deal for all of us. He, he actually took the time to do some one-on-one pictures with us and your son.
Mm-hmm.
And the picture, uh, was beautiful, but, uh, I, I just appreciate him and I do appreciate Mr. Scott and all the staff out there. I mean, because it was a, a crazy day to get that, that evening checked off, but it went off smooth and everything was good. It's just hats off to everyone that's involved. But other than that, yeah, we did a good chance to discuss these things the last meeting. It is time to go, but not forgotten, he's risen and that's the only reason we're here, guys. That's it.
Well, if you think they stole the thunder, you're one of the guys. I was just, uh, thankful to the fair, fair staff and, uh, Mr. Scott for, and Mr. Stapleton for getting the governor here. And I was, uh, pretty generous, uh, stopping by and especially taking the pictures and, and have people all around him. I'm sure that probably gets old from time to time, he was real gracious about it. We do appreciate that. And, uh, as Mr. Land said, Representative Schoeff was here and I actually got a call back from, from his assistant yesterday. And, uh, they're working on some things for Swan County, I think, and I think, uh, will be very helpful. Those kind of times, and I don't think I've worked it. Also grateful for the other local agreement with Chief Hand and the city. I think that's a, a real good thing. That's just about all I've got.
Nothing throws off here, but I knew that today, they actually went back to meet about the, the alliances. Anyway, I haven't seen, uh, the discussions working out of these meetings today, you guys. I mean, tend to believe that was gonna be the-
New district.
The districting, but I think, I think they actually, that session today discussed that.
I agree, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, no problem. I was just about to say thank you of yourself and Commissioner Lamb for, to Mr. Schoeff when he come to town and y'all spent time with him, I know. And I was able to talk to him for a short time. And, uh, just, a lot of times when you get changes, you're kinda concerned, but, but, I mean, this, this gentleman seems, seems for real. Seems like he's really got Swan County interested heart and, uh, I think he's gonna do a great job for us, so, I, I feel for you.
Any of you that don't know him, and I didn't know him, got to talk to him the other day. He owns his own business, so he is a working guy, you know, owns a, is it healthy gas, Chris?
Healthy gas, from that.
Or Commissioner Lynn, but he, uh, like Commissioner Stapleton said, I think he's gonna be a real asset for us and, and pretty easy to get along with and he's just like the rest of us, so, that's always enjoyable. If there's not anything else, I'll just entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Commissioner Stapleton, second by Commissioner Flynn, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?